They might be stuck in some traffic or something, but we have a long agenda, so we'll get started. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Fermender.
Here.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Kova. See if he comes in late. Lauren Mallor.
Here.
Christina Creed. Save for Miss Creed. Adam Scobie.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
Eight members present, thank you. All right, we start this evening with our annual CAVE Association Board of Education Student Leadership Awards. We have a number of young people here tonight to be honored by CAVE and Dr. Kutaia will take this over at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon and members of Board of Education. It certainly is one of my favorite evenings of the year when we get to have our young people in celebration of their great accomplishments, as of course, supported by the many decisions that you make. So it's a little, it's nice to actually see the fruits of your labor. So let's consider it that this evening. Thank you, boys and girls, parents, families, staff members who are here, community members who are here to support our young people in celebration of what they do each and every day in our schools. And as you'll learn, even outside of our school walls and in our great community in the city of Milford. So, young people, the way this will go is I'll announce your name from your school and you will, yes, come and stand next to me in front of this large crowd and I'll say awesome things about you as shared with me by the leaders in your school building. And then we'll hand you a certificate, shake your hand. I'm sure there will be some photo ops, parents, family members that may want to take some pictures. We'll allow for that and then we'll move on to the next student to be recognized. Okay? All right, great. So, let's start with East Shore Middle School. Majeva Jabril, please join me.
I already see her.
Go see her. All right, we may come, wait, wait, I see someone. Come on in, family. Okay, come on in. Majeva? Oh, yes. One view, one view. We just gave an introduction, so I'm going to say wonderful things about you. Okay? Okay. Majeva is an eighth grade student who has received honors with distinction throughout her entire middle school career thus far. Majeva is widely recognized as a reliable member of our school community. Her ability to step into complex situations and guide her peers forward demonstrates maturity behind, beyond her years. Her thoughtful approach, clear perspective, and follow through on commitments make her a trusted student among the entire East Shore Middle School community. One of her most notable accomplishments was the successful planning of a school-wide dance. Her leadership and organizational skills were instrumental in bringing the event to life. Majeva also serves as a dedicated member of our student leadership team where she plays a key role in planning initiatives that strengthen community bonds. She is a strong advocate for fairness and equity, often speaking when she notices something that needs to be addressed. Majeva is a talented, involved young lady who strives to do her very best at any task she takes on. And we are so pleased to recognize Majeva for her achievement. Congratulations. Come on up, Ms. Swanson, take a photo, okay?
And we'll turn around for mom. Perfect. Thank you.
Share. Well, that was perfect.
You're going to take a picture?
Oh, maybe picture, sorry. The next student, also from East Shore Middle School, is Wyatt Hughes. Wyatt is an eighth grader who has received honors throughout his entire middle school career. Wyatt is a passionate and dedicated student who brings enthusiasm and curiosity to everything he does. A true lover of the performing arts, he is a frequent performer in both school drama productions and with our local community theater partner, Penta Chino. Thoughtful and quick witted, Wyatt is well known for his positive attitude and genuine kindness, making him a valued presence within our school community. In addition to his involvement in the arts, Wyatt is an active member of the student leadership team where he helps to plan and facilitate monthly community building activities. He participates in a wide range of extracurricular activities. Within the classroom, Wyatt is a dependable collaborator and a thoughtful contributor. His peers often look to him as a trusted voice and supportive partner in learning. Whether through academic discussion or group projects, he encourages others while offering insight and perspective. Wyatt is guaranteed to have a bright future with his grit, genuine concern for others, and commitment to any challenge that he is presented with. We are so proud to recognize Wyatt for his great accomplishments this evening. Congratulations. Thank you. From Harborside Middle School, we welcome Madison Eisenheller. Madison embodies the true spirit of leadership through her unwavering commitment to others, her determination in the face of challenges, and her ability to bring people together. Whether in the classroom, on the soccer field, or in the community, Madison leads with integrity, inclusivity, and resilience. A natural leader, she steps up to guide products, projects both in and out of school, demonstrating her ability to organize, motivate, and collaborate effectively. Beyond her academic and extracurricular contributions, Madison exemplifies perseverance, never shying away from a challenge and refusing to give up, no matter the obstacles. Her ability to make thoughtful decisions, support her peers, and uphold a strong sense of fairness and diplomacy makes her a role model for all those around her. For outstanding leadership, compassion, and dedication, we are proud to recognize Madison this evening with this well-deserved award. Also from Harborside Middle School, we welcome Cole Materi, and he's on the baseball field. Congratulations, Cole. Can I just take a moment to read his little bio because I think it's worth reading into the... We are honored to acknowledge Cole as a 2025 CAVE Award winner at Harborside Middle. Cole exemplifies true leadership in both character and action, consistently demonstrating qualities that inspire peers and positively impact the school community. One of Cole's greatest strengths is his willingness to take on challenges. Whether stepping into a leadership role in group projects, tackling complex problems, or volunteering, volunteering for difficult tasks, Cole approaches every opportunity with confidence and determination. He is always willing to lend a helping hand, advocate for his peers, and create an inclusive environment where everyone feels valued. He brings out the best in teammates by fostering collaboration, listening actively, and ensuring all voices are heard. We are so very proud to recognize Cole for his accomplishments this evening. So once again, for Cole. And now from West Shore Middle School, we'd like to recognize the accomplishments of Jason Seba. It went out of order. Jason embodies the qualities of leadership, perseverance, teamwork, and dedication, making him an outstanding award winner this evening. As an eighth grade student, Jason consistently goes above and beyond in his academic pursuits. He is a high honor student who approaches his schoolwork with diligence and determination. Jason is a committed member of our WAVE program at West Shore where he actively engages in activities that support both his own growth and the success of others. He is known for his willingness to help, his gratitude, and his unwavering work ethic. His positive attitude and kindness has earned him the respect and admiration of both his peers and his teachers. West Shore Middle and the greater Milford Public Schools is so proud to recognize Jason as a student who leads by example, takes on challenges with determination, and consistently honors his commitments. Congratulations. And again, from West Shore Middle School, Abigail Misiak. All right, Abigail exemplifies the qualities of a true leader. She takes on challenges with confidence, collaborates effectively with others, and consistently honors her commitments. As an eighth grade high honor student, Abigail has demonstrated both academic excellence and a deep dedication to our school community. For the past three years, she's served as a value member of the student council, taking on active role in representing and supporting her peers. She has also contributed her talents to the school's drama production, showcasing her commitment to teamwork and creativity. Additionally, Abigail is a proud member of the Sidekick Student Leader Program where she plays an important role in fostering a positive and inclusive school environment. Abigail's kindness, respect, and welcoming nature make her a role model for all of her classmates. West Shore Middle is so proud to recognize Abigail for her leadership, dedication, and compassion, and we are so happy to recognize Abigail with this award. Congratulations. So the bios get a little bit longer because now we're in high school and these young people have done some pretty amazing things. And it was, I did go through and try to remove, but it's just hard to remove much when you're talking about some rock stars. From Jonathan Law High School, we welcome and recognize this evening Lily Beer. Not a strange face to this Board of Education as you've seen Lily monthly. Lily is an exceptional young woman who embodies intelligence, compassion, and a profound sense of purpose. Lily has a passion for learning and her insatiable curiosity is quite evident. Her involvement in the National Honor Society and the honor societies for math and science speaks to her intellectual curiosity and her commitment to excellence. Whether Lily was navigating the complexities of the Yale Discovery to Cure internship program or leading her peers as the captain of the girls' basketball and lacrosse teams, she approached every challenge with determination and grace. One of Lily's most remarkable accomplishments is her creation of the Teens for Courage Club, an initiative born from her deep commitment to raising awareness about domestic and dating violence. As the founder and president, Lily has tirelessly worked to educate her peers and the community about the importance of recognizing warning signs and fostering healthy relationships. Lily's ability to make meaningful action and inspire others is a testament to her character and her vision for a safer, more compassionate world. Lily's work as a student ambassador and her role as a Board of Education liaison reflect her commitment to creating an inclusive and supportive environment for all students. Lily's empathy and her ability to connect with people from diverse backgrounds make her a natural leader and change agent in a very complex world. We're so very proud to honor her this evening. The next student from Jonathan Law High School who cannot be with us that we are recognizing is Charlie Pepper. Charlie is a young man of character, resilience, and promise. As a three-year varsity football and basketball starter and captain of both in his senior year, he has demonstrated leadership both on and off the field, leading by example. Off the field, Charlie's involvement in various extracurricular activities showcases his adaptability and outgoing nature. Whether he's working at the Black Hawk Country Club, managing basketball games, for the Milford Rec Department, or serving at Sachem's Head Catering, Charlie approaches each role with enthusiasm and a willingness to learn. His ability to engage with diverse groups of people, coupled with his friendly demeanor, makes him a natural leader who others gravitate towards. This skill is further highlighted in his role as a student advocate and ambassador for incoming middle school students where he helps ease their transition into high school life. Charlie's passion for community and a team building, and team building is evident in his volunteer work with the Jonathan Law Booster Club and at St. Anne's Parish. These experiences have helped him develop a sense of responsibility and a desire to contribute positively to his community. Charlie sets high standards for himself and is an inspiration to all around him. Congratulations, Charlie. From Joseph A. Foreign High School, we'd like to recognize Luke Hackett. Luke is an exceptional student whose academic achievement, leadership, and dedication to service make him a truly deserving candidate for this award. Throughout his time at Foreign High, Luke has distinguished himself through his intellect, character, and unwavering commitment to making a difference in his community. Academically, Luke stands out for both his intellectual curiosity and his drive to make learning meaningful. He thrives in challenging environments, having taken a range of advanced placement courses. What sets Luke apart, though, is how he connects what he learns in the classroom to the world around him. Whether that's exploring the structure of global systems or preparing for a career in healthcare through the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. His internship at Milford Vascular Institute and, and hands-on CNA experience at a local nursing home demonstrate not only initiative, but a genuine desire to help others through service-oriented, purposeful work. Luke is also a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and the Roche-Cappa Social Studies Honor Society, recognitions that speak to his academic excellence, his commitment to scholarship, and his contributions across multiple disciplines. Whether serving as a student liaison to the Board of Ed or previously as class president, secretary, sorry. He has worked to build a more connected and inclusive school community. His leadership extends to the soccer field where as varsity captain, he motivates his teammates through determination, integrity, and a strong sense of unity. Luke's commitment to service is evident in everything he does, from his involvement in Natural Helpers where he supports and guides younger students to his work with the YMCA Summer Camp. His dedication to the foreign community is matched by his reliability and kindness, always showing up with a willingness to help. Balancing his responsibilities with, yes, a part-time job, when you do that, we don't know. Luke continues to demonstrate maturity and unwavering dedication and making a positive impact. So Luke is thoughtful, motivated, and a community-minded young man who leads by example. Whether it's in a classroom or on the soccer field or in service to others, he brings purpose and integrity to everything he does. And I can assure you, you can see on how very well deserved this award is. Congratulations. And finally, from Joseph A. Foreign High School, we'd like to recognize Dobby Lee. Dobby is a dynamic, driven, and compassionate student leader whose commitment to excellence spans academics, extracurriculars, service, and the arts. As editor-in-chief of the Main Street Mirror, Dobby leads a school newspaper with creativity and precision, building on prior roles as content and layout editor. She is also a passionate advocate for equity and inclusion, serving as co-founder and co-president of the Multicultural and Diversity Club and a founding member of the Equity Coalition. Dobby's leadership extends across many areas of school life. She is the president of the Model UN Club, a liaison on the student council, and a student rep to the Board of Education where she reports monthly on school events. Her dedication to service is evident through over 180 hours of volunteer work with the Boys and Girls Club, Key Club, and as outdoor track manager. She's also president of Bethel Youth United and a student-led group committed to addressing homelessness in the local community. A talented artist and performer, Dobby is a section leader in the concert and marching band flute and has been recognized for her work in drama club design, including a Halo Award nomination. Her creative passions also extend to her Call Me Dabs booktube channel on YouTube where she shares her love of reading. Academically, Dobby is a member of seven honor societies, including the National Honor Society and the Quillan Scroll. She has earned numerous accolades such as the prestigious Harvard Book Award and multiple AP Student of the Year honors. Dobby has also been recognized for excellence in Model UN conferences and national journalism competitions. Yes, and outside of school, Dobby holds a third-degree black belt at Tai Kwon Do and works part-time as a host at a local restaurant. With a remarkable blend of intellect, heart, and dedication, Dobby Lee exemplifies the very best of student leadership integrity, and her future is extraordinarily bright. So very proud of you, Dobby.
Thank you, Dr. Kutaia, and congratulations to all our recipients this evening. We are very proud of you all. I'm sure you all have things to get to for the rest of the evening. You're free to head out while we undertake the rest of our meeting. We'll just pause for a couple of seconds while people get up and leave if they choose to. So have a great evening and thank you again for being here and congratulations to everybody. All right, we can move on with the rest of our meeting. And next on the agenda is our student reports. So we have, I think this evening Jonathan Law starts first, so we have Abby, Dobby, and Lily.
Good evening, Board members. It is a pleasure to be with you all once again. In academics, two new sections were created in the TLC, including the more section and a world language section, which includes books in five different languages. But this or that work has been a highlight of the TLC with students weighing uniquely. Classes in science, English, social studies, business, and more work with library resources for research support, including databases and citation. AI was a big part of instruction with classes using library supports to incorporate AI ethically into teaching and classroom practices. Book club has continued throughout the year with students choosing their own books and themes of horror, fan family, romance, dystopian, and more. Over 800 books were checked out for independent reading throughout the year. In the world language department, thirty members of the Law Latin class attended the Connecticut State Latin and Greek Day at Holiday Hill. Students participated in activities such as academic competitions, athletic competitions, and workshops. Students interacted with other students in Latin programs across Connecticut and explored fun ways to learn about the ancient world, celebrating ancient cultures and languages. Students started AP testing on May 5th and exams will continue throughout the rest of this week. We are so incredibly proud of all the hard work and determination from students this year. May 5th also marked the first day of internships for our seniors. The majority of the senior class has journeyed to various job sites where there are shadowing professionals to gauge a better understanding of their destined field of work in the future and gain great experience along the way. We would like to extend a huge congratulations to bless your valedictorian, Deepika Shitjara, and our solicitorian, Alexandra Fina. We are so proud of you both. In athletics, Jonathan Law is rounding up another successful spring season. So far, girls tennis, boys tennis, and softball have qualified for the state tournaments. We are excited to welcome our incoming eighth graders on June 5th to our athletic open house. Where all incoming student athletes will get to meet coaches and athletes at Jonathan Law. Law's spring scholar athletes are Dalton Evans and Carol Jean, and congratulations to you both.
Our boys' basketball team's head coach, Jamie Anderson, has stepped down after an outstanding run with the program since 2017. The school welcomes Matthew McPartland as the new head coach. He has been the assistant for the past nine years. Congratulations. Our girls' softball team... Our girls' softball team participated in the Walk for Wishes last Saturday and raised almost $1,400 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. This past month, 17 students signed up to volunteer at Habitat for Humanity, a nonprofit that builds houses for low-income individuals. Students went into New Haven to engage in their local community and work side by side with contractors, learning and installing vinyl siding on a house. This on-the-job-site training was engaging, interactive, and educational. The Save Promise Club and Courage Club joined forces to host a week full of awareness in honor of National Youth Violence Prevention Week. During the week of the 28th, each day was a different theme, and there was a new activity for students to engage in. Some included Make the Promise Monday, where students signed their name on a banner in the lobby, as well as Winston Wednesday, where Milford PD's therapy dog visited the TLC. The Courage Club hosted their final event of the year on Tuesday, April 29th. They partnered with Legacy Score Type One Go in Stratford to host a self-defense class for students and faculty. The event was certainly a success, and all who attended left with experience and knowledge to have on hand in case of emergency. The Jonathan Law Prom is this upcoming Saturday, May 17th, at Anthony's Ocean View in New Haven. The senior class has been anxiously awaiting this event, and we look forward to a fun night. Post-prom is being held at the Shelton Sports Center, where all seniors are welcome to attend. There will be ice skating, golfing, games, food, and raffle prizes for everyone to enjoy. This year has truly gone by so fast. It feels like just yesterday, Abby and I were nervously sharing our first student report in September. We are so incredibly grateful to have been given this opportunity to see you all every month and share all of Jonathan Law's exciting news, events, and academic and athletic achievements. We are so sad for our time with the Milford Board of Education to end, but overjoyed to introduce Jonathan Law liaisons for next school year. Leila Alwagna and Marcus Towns, congratulations to you both. We cannot wait to see you continue to thrive next year. Thank you all again, and we hope you have a great summer.
And now we have Luke and Dabi at Foreign.
Good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be back here once again. It has been an eventful past month at Foreign. Before we begin, I'd like to mention that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all of our wonderful teachers across the Milford district. We are so grateful for you. With the year's end upcoming very soon, our seniors had a fun time celebrating their college decisions at our Decision Day event on May 1st. They were able to talk to their classmates, take photos, and win raffle prizes. Our seniors have also begun their spring internships, where they can gain firsthand experience in the field of their choice. The end of the year also brings many awards. Foreign recently held their all-school awards ceremony, where students were honored as Student of the Year in various classes, won book awards, or received their Graduation with Distinction Accord. We'd also like to recognize PE teacher Mrs. Gannon for Foreign Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Carano for Foreign Para-educator of the Year, and Mrs. Lahav for Foreign Parent of the Year. Thank you for your dedication to the school community. On a similar note, Alexandria Regan and Alexander Gregory have been named CIEC Scholar Athletes of 2025. Great job on all of your hard work as student athletes. With the seniors graduating, our school newspaper, The Main Street Mirror, has selected their editors for the next year. Congratulations to all our new editors, and we wish you luck next year. Also, from our journalism program, we'd like to give a huge congratulations to both Gianna Weaver, who won an honorable mention from the Quill and Scroll Honor Society for her feature story on Sandy Hook and the Choose Love movement, and Joey Kurzner, who won fourth place in the New England Press Association Contest for broadcast and commentary review.
We would also like to extend the congratulations to Senior Isabella Polisi. Isabella was recognized at the SCASA Awards Ceremony for her outstanding leadership and service to the school and community. This past week at Foreign, we also held our Unified Prom. Unified students filled the afternoon with lots of music and dancing to round off the year. Students were accompanied by food, drink, photo opportunities, and volunteers from the Natural Helpers Club. From the Language Department, students from Latin classes attended the Connecticut State Latin and Greek Day at Holiday Hill. The day was filled with lots of activities and learning as a way to celebrate the upcoming end of the year. With the school year starting to come to a close, we would like to wish the best of luck to all students partaking in AP exams, and a congratulations to those who took exams last week. Keep working hard. Continuing on the same note, to round off the year for seniors, we have our annual senior trip to lay compounds. From our Band Department, this Friday, May 16th, is our annual Pasta and Jazz Night. The night will be filled with great food and great music, all in the cafe and courtyard. And we'd also like to extend a congratulations to juniors Joey Kurzner and Shay Pangu, who will be joining us next year as the student board liaisons. As the year starts to come to a close, we would like to just take a moment to thank you all, board members, for this great year. It's been a pleasure to speak here every month during the school year. Thank you for all your time tonight, and the months pass, and we hope you guys have a great summer. Thank you.
So student reps, we have a little token of our appreciation for all your hard work, sharing with us, coming to our meetings every month. And we look forward to working with the incoming, Dabi, and Lilly. Incoming liaisons, we'll see you all in September. So I hope you all have a great summer as well.
Thank you.
And you're free to head out. All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. We have speakers. Our public comment statement speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The Board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted, and consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited without absent parental waiver. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the Board, but we welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions, and all will be taken into consideration. Please note, our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube, and we ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody who'd like to address the Board this evening for public comment?
Well, whoever else is. Good evening, Board. How are you? Andrew King, 32-seater Hurst Lane. First, let me say thank you for your hard work. I know this budget season has been a rather rough one, and the city of Milford much appreciates your dedication to it. I know you guys donate, really donate your time to this, so it's much appreciated. You know, now it gets even harder. I know tonight you have to discuss the cuts that are going to be made to your budget physically. You know, it hasn't been made easier with this budget season as well. There was some missed opportunities that could have ended up getting more money back into your budget. Just the other night, I believe there was an offer that the minority was going to put some money back into your budget, but it was soundly rejected by the majority, which is unfortunate. I also think that maybe there was an opportunity to, you know, save some money in this budget with an RFP on the bus contract, you know, which possibly could have saved some teachers' jobs. And, you know, getting into that, too, I see that there is 16 positions that are on the list to be cut. And the one thing I, one problem I have with that list is that 14 of them are at the school level, mostly teachers, and only two of them are management positions. There doesn't seem to be a lot of balance there. I don't think that our cuts should directly affect our children as much as those cuts suggest. I think maybe there is a little balance that could be made on that. So I ask this Board to please look over those cuts, think outside the box, be not stuck to that list. There's other things that can be proposed, other things that can be amended. You're all very smart people, and I respect you all, and I'm sure you'll all do the right thing. Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Anybody else would like to address the Board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to Chair's report. I'm going to start with liaison reports first. Do we have any liaison reports from individuals?
I do. The Milford Prevention Council. It's Milford Prevention Week, May 15th. There's a free family yoga night at Milford Public Library at 6:00 PM. Registration is required. Everything I say tonight is all on their Facebook page. It's extremely active, some of the activities they're doing, and to fill you in on what's going on with Milford Prevention Council. They also have, they continue to offer mental health first aid for adults and youth free, and those dates are also on their Facebook page. The Milford Festival for Mental Health was held on Saturday, 5/3. The junior majors, Milford Junior Majors, won the tug of war. MVC Student Contest billboards are up around Milford. There's one more Zoom gathering for the book talk, The Anxious Generation. Much has come out of the group. It's been five months, and basically, they've pretty much completed the book. A lot has come out. There's one more on May 20th, and what really has stood out is that there is an exciting new organization, OK to Delay. It's formed by a group of parents from Orange Avenue. They'll present and discuss their mission in the next event. But look, on the May 20th Zoom gathering, but then throughout the summer and then into next year, they'd like to engage more people with OK to Delay. You can email them, and they also have a Facebook page as well, and that basically discusses, you know, OK to Delay is what it says. You know, holding off on social media in the middle schools until the eighth grade. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other, Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Reporting from the Permanent Schools Committee, one day I'll get the name right. So we will see more today on the specs regarding Jonathan Law, and we'll discuss how we basically are dedicating our time and energy right now to Jonathan Law. And then, once the law project is completed, we will move to Foreign, based on what budget is remaining. We also received, the committee is going to start working on roofs and then esports arena. And this money that the Permanent Schools Committee uses is always bonded money, is not directly related to the money that is used in this budget. So regardless of what is going on in that budget, it can't be used here. So that's a part of the misconception. And what's important to note is the work that we start on these permanent projects will take years to come to fruition. So we are, right now, have started this project on Jonathan Law a year ago. We started with an RFP, we're at a request for qualifications, and then RFPs, and met with architects, and now we are maybe going to break ground in the spring of next year. So in the broader context of all the projects that we will be discussing in the future, potentially regarding facilities, we have to be aware of the timeline, that nothing happens quickly. And so we should always think about that when we're making decisions.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Ms. Ruby?
For the Milford Educational Foundation, they have, are just completing a couple of activities that they have done since the end of April. They ran, what am I looking at? The library program, Build Your Own Game Night. Also, Evening Under the Stars at the Planetarium at Foreign High School. Always a great night. The robotics team, which is made up of high schoolers from both Law and Foreign, did get invited to the World Championship, but they declined to go this year, and they'll go again in the upcoming years, because I'm sure they'll get there again. And the paint drip pad that did so well this year on painting the skateboards and designing their own skateboards is going to round two, and that's in the starting stages to get that done.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have just a brief report from PTA Council. West Shore's Megan Laudenslaughter and Julie Fisher were honored with the Connecticut PTA Lifetime Achievement Award for their work with the WAVE program. It was the council's last meeting of the year, so they also elected their officers for next year, and things will pick up again in September. So in terms of Board information, I just want to remind everybody that we have the great art show that's outside. If you have some time, you should peruse the work of our students, very talented, very talented kids. We have concerts, we have award ceremonies, closing activities and graduations coming up. So keep your eye on the calendar, long-range planning work. You had all been asked to hold open Mondays, and now that the budget is near complete, we will turn our attention back to the long-range facilities planning work, starting with a special meeting next Monday to 16th. We will try to finalize draft concepts. I want to reiterate at this time that we are not identifying schools. We are only thinking conceptually, and the hope is then to have a final public hearing the evening of our Tuesday, May 27th, committee of the whole meeting at persons. A reminder that the end-of-year ceremony begins at 5:30 that same night. It's a Tuesday because Monday's a holiday, so don't let that confuse you. Please let Pam know if you can attend the end-of-year ceremony. The board members sitting on stage, and they help to pass out certificates for the Parent Parent and Teacher of the Year. And finally, we are holding Monday, June 2nd, open for hopefully the final adoption of the Long Range Facilities Planning Concept and Discussion of the RFP. So hopefully, this phase of the work will be coming to a close before summer. Lastly, I just want to take a few moments to mention that, as you all know, tonight, we have the difficult task of being forced to identify almost $1.3 million in adjustments to our '25-'26 budget to offset the reduction made by the Board of Finance and the inability of the Alderman to obtain the 10 votes needed to restore any funding. We are grateful to the eight who did vote to restore. A motion was made, only two motions were made that night, nothing but that. And eight voted to restore some funds, but without the 10 votes, that could not move forward. Let's see, as a Board, we spend the year leading up to budget time reviewing with administration the workings of the district so that we can propose a budget that reflects our priorities. It's a document to be considered in its totality, and for some of us, it's the second budget cycle. Others have worked on four, six, or more cycles. We understand the needs of the district from all the work that we do throughout the year, and we understand how all the pieces fit together. We are also required to operate within the dollars allocated to us by the Board of Finance and the Board of Aldermen, and therefore, we have no choice but to disrupt the synergy of our adopted budget by eliminating items contained within it. It was a maintenance budget that with intention contained no new initiatives and was designed to simply support what is currently in place with adjustments for increased contractual costs and obligations, mandates, and inflation, items that represent our vision for our young people and the needs for the coming year, needs that must be balanced across the system. So to be clear, the items that we'll be discussing tonight are needs, not wants, and certainly not waste. If our budget contained either, it would be a whole lot bigger than it is, since we've seen from the superintendent's information that she said no to almost $28 million in asks from departments and identified $645,000 in savings out the gate this year. In fact, we have been forced to eliminate nearly $2.6 million in the past two years, on top of the nearly $1.2 million in savings that have been identified by the Board and Superintendent during that time. These forced reductions do not mean that these are things that we can do without. These are tough discussions. We'll be talking about human capital, instructional and operational expenditures, disruption of replacement cycles of equipment, supplies, and technology infrastructure, whose elimination or deferment will have real consequences and will likely mean increased costs at a future time. The impact of some changes will not be apparent to many, but even the elimination of a lawnmower, for instance, might mean grass isn't cut on the playgrounds. So please understand, these are decisions that no one wants to have to make, and there are no good choices. We do this knowing the system cannot take much more stress before starting to see profound impact on operations and outcomes. We have diligently undertaken a long-range facility planning process with intention, with care, and with transparency, and it's disappointing that we have a level of impatience on the city side that seems to prefer that we just barrel through with potential forced consolidations in reaction to consecutive multimillion-dollar budget reductions versus the thoughtful plan process that we thought we were asked for. So we will move forward as best we can. We'll make the best decisions that we can, knowing that, you know, in our hearts, we want only what's best for the district. So with that, I will turn the discussion. May 19th, I'm sorry, my mistake. May 19th is the, it's a week from tonight.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, May 19th. I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Kuttaya.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We all set on the date?
May 19th, next Monday, is the special one. My apologies for the misspelling.
Our first item is the final adoption of the '25-'26 Board of Education budget, and we will need approval this evening. In your packet, there is, there was included a two-page document, so I'll call your attention to that. Ms. Glennon, how would you like us to proceed?
Dr. Kuttaya, we would like you, please, to go through line by line each item, and you can ask questions with each.
And you can ask questions with each, if you don't mind.
Sure. And different members of my team will be taking different items, okay?
Yes.
First item, account number 1110, is reduce the district administrator. We will take the opportunity to revisit everyone's roles and responsibilities in the teaching and learning and people personnel services departments and reduce a position in administration and reallocate responsibilities across other administrators as appropriate.
Any questions on this one? I have a question. Can you please explain just briefly the relationship between, let's say, scale? We've got 600, 590 teachers versus, in central office, I believe we have, if you take the principals out of the mix, if you take PPS out of the mix, we have maybe a dozen central office administrators, and you're going to reduce by one.
Sure. And I'm not saying that you remember this, so I'll just refer to, at the Board of Alderman meeting, I actually did an overview of the organizational framework of our school district. I just was looking at it a minute ago, so this is weird, like, ask that question. And so on the PPS side, did you say not PPS or including PPS?
Well, when, if you take, PPS is pretty much a given, so we're talking.
So we're talking, Mr. Autieri's office of teaching and learning. And we have two, four, six, seven supervisors that span the support of all of our students across 14 campuses. We talked about that night, they support over 300 unique curricular offerings. And they work on developing and delivering and analyzing 123 local and state assessments. And they create and support a learning system or professional learning for 590 teachers. So seven in Mr. Autieri's office, office, they have desks in the office. And then on the PPS side, we have Ms. Stewart and then a, someone who oversees elementary, the pre-K, elementary, middle and high, and those all specialized programming for young people. And then we have a supervisor committed to school climate, very complicated webby kind of job. And then the student development academic success supervisor. And those two positions used to be on the teaching and learning side, but with intention to look at the wellness and wholeness of all a child's life. We relocated those two positions to Ms. Stewart's department so that we could really look at the whole child on that side of the hallway, with intention of making the connection between teaching and learning PPS.
Okay. And then yourself and Mr. Brennan, who is doing the job that was done by Mr. Rich Telly, given the title of superintendent because he's a certified.
Assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent, sorry.
Easy to make.
So we have 5,000, over 5,000 students, 590 teachers. I think about another 600 regular staff members. And I'm counting about, I don't know, 16 maybe administrators, and one of those is going. So when you're talking about scale and just, you know, the point is that you cannot decimate one area of a system, you know, you have to be, you have to have balance. Did you agree with that?
Absolutely. And it also relates to the goals of the district. So do we want coherence? Do we want a common curriculum in eight, elementary, three middle, two high? Or do you want highly independent practice in 491 classroom spaces? And I also review this for Board of Aldermen. We did some organizational research around what highly effective organizations, what percentage of their budget is committed to administration or leadership. And on average, in the 2020 year, that was the earliest I could find, 6.7% of school district budgets were related to administration at both the district and school levels. And we are well below that. I also shared with some aldermen that we are at, if not a little bit lower than what the city side has invested in their management, directors and coordinators and leaders as well. So it's unfortunate that the only dialogue occurring is how, only dialogue occurring is with a focus on the school district. But organizationally, the city also has a structure. Actually, we haven't really seen their org chart. They've only asked for our org chart. So I do feel confident that we do not have an overstaffed central office, that we have just the right number of people to provide appropriate leadership in the areas curriculum instruction and assessment, in particular, Mr. Autieri's department. And I'm believing we're seeing the fruits of the labor of that department.
And the way the curriculum is being handled with our instructional supervisors was a system that was in place when you arrived?
No, we just modified it based on the reconfiguration. So we had K-12 supervisors and at no additional FTEs and no additional costs to the district. I just reorganized. So we didn't add anyone. The two modifications, as I talked about in the Board of Alderman meeting, is the reclassification of Mr. Brennan's position and then the addition of the equity supervisor. So those are the only two changes under my leadership.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, next one?
All right, next item is under account 1111. And that is the reduction of middle school FTEs for. We've talked about with you before that the reduction of FTEs will assist us in balancing class sizes at the middle school level. We've been working with our leadership team at the middle school level to look at class sizes with that particular shift. Again, using the class size guideline of about 23 to 25 students on average as we have approached looking at the additional four FTE reduction across the three middle schools. In terms of average class sizes, if I can give you an example. If we're looking at Harborside Middle School, for instance, which has about 400 students total. At ELA, we would be looking at a shift from about 18 students on average to about 21 students in grade seven. And if we're talking about East Shore Middle School, average core class size in ELA in math would be about 15 students. And science and social studies would be the largest at about 24 students on average.
In the future, are we going to? So what prompted, this number went down by two. So originally in your original list, you had potentially six.
We were able to actually run real schedules because students have selected their courses. So with student selections, we, thank you to every middle school administrator room, ran early schedules, which we don't normally do in May. I know you can't get them earlier, families, but we ran mock schedules with real student choices. So we determined that we could not make the 6.0 reduction, so we scaled back.
And you're confident the four will be adequate, that you can do it?
With the information that we have on May 12th.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Smith?
So with running those mock schedules, that means that you can reduce four FTEs without taking classes away from students who've already selected it? Just want to make sure I understand that, okay, thank you.
Now, we have already had this conversation, so I just want to make sure that we're in the core. But our voice and choice and art and music is already slipping away. We did that through the regular budget. We've already talked about that, so.
Ms. Will Pointon?
Thank you. And just to understand these class sizes that you mentioned. So right now, we're looking at going into the next school year with some classes as high as 24.
Yeah, so I did pull that information for you as well. So if we were looking at largest class sizes across the three middle schools, it'd be about 26 students at West Shore. In world language, we get up to 24 at Harborside was the highest number.
What class is 26?
There were several of them that fell in that 26 category. And science and social studies at East Shore would be about 24 students. So those were the highest across the three middle schools as we projected out across all areas, core content as well as UA courses.
And Ms. Will Pointon, we know we have some tinkering to do with that because sometimes you throw things into the computer and it spits out classes of 26, 24, 23 and 18, right? So if I remember correctly, Mr. Gottlieb, you told me you would have to go in and hand move some kids around to maybe bring down some of those larger numbers. And I'll remind you that the class size guideline for fifth grade is 23.
Yes, 23 to 25, right?
No, in fifth grade.
Oh, fifth grade, fifth grade, okay.
So we were looking at this as a progressive number. That 23 to 25 was the number we were trying not to exceed in middle school. And there are classes at the high school living around 25, 26 in some cases. But you also then have some AP courses that are as small as six to eight, so.
Would it be an assumption that if we have sixth graders who are going to be in a class size of, let's say, 26, 24, that if we kind of keep the status quo, that that will be their experience moving forward?
That class size?
Yeah.
It could, it all depends on the incoming sixth grade class. Because then if it's smaller, you have the flexibility of FTEs if we don't scoop them up for the next budget cycle.
Okay.
So this is the hardest shift in some cases because the class sizes of the middle school have been artificially low. And we were doing that in anticipation of shifting FTEs for some more, ramping up in career pathways and voice and choice. We use that voice and choice synonymous with career pathways. So rather than straining the budget, we were going to start shifting FTEs to more specialized courses. So since that isn't happening, we are taking those FTEs to right-size the classes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Ms. Muller?
Given the mock schedules that you're able to run and determine that four was the number rather than six for what potentially could be removed, forcibly removed from this budget, do you know what areas, based on that mock scheduling, came up on the short end?
Can you define what a short end is in your?
Yeah, where are the scores coming from? Are we losing for math teachers? Are we going to be losing for ELA teachers? Are we losing, obviously, music, art, health are in a different category that we'll discuss here as well. But where will we feel the four? Where will we see the four?
So we're going to limit the specificity of that answer because we haven't met with teachers yet? But would they be core?
Yes, it'd be core.
They'd be core subjects?
Different areas, depending on the middle school.
Okay, so we don't know the school or the specificity at this point. You do, but we don't. We just know it's core somewhere across the three.
And we worked with each principal and it's all hard conversations.
Oh, sure.
No one's loving what we're doing.
No, the easy conversation got voted down at the Board of Aldermen, so that's why we're having this conversation. Understood. Hard conversations across the board.
So, and just want to express my appreciation to the middle school team for coming to the table, knowing that we're going to do this as a team. So, yeah, appreciate it, everyone, supervisors included.
The internal conversations that you all have had to have on the backend are not enviable. So we appreciate you.
Always make sure the door is closed.
Yeah, doors closed, tuck a little towel underneath, yeah, sure.
Ms. Doyle, did you have a question or has it been answered?
I'm okay.
Anybody else? All right, next one?
Next one is still in the 1111 account category. And that is a reduction of high school FTEs. So we have taken a similar process, looking at the additional two. Again, that's when we talk about the six, we are at two for the high school FTEs. I've been working closely with Mr. Darcy and Mr. Berkowitz, who have been working along with the supervisors as well. And without getting into specifics about the particular content areas to be reduced, both schools do have a plan for what the additional 1.0 FTE would be. And in terms of talking about anticipated class sizes for those areas, at Jonathan Law, anticipating a class size of between 20 and 22. And Foreign is in the same bucket, about 20 to 23 class size wise once the reductions are made to those particular areas. And one of the areas that we obviously prioritize, as we talked about the high school FTEs, was making sure that we continue to provide the opportunities that Dr. Katia and I have mentioned, that our leadership team really prioritizes, being the advanced placement, the concurrent enrollment opportunities. As all of you saw on Friday, we are excited to be able to bring in seven additional concurrent enrollment opportunities through Southern Connecticut State University. So trying to make sure that we do not, we minimize the impact to those particular course areas right now. So that is something else that we're taking into account as we work with the high school leadership teams.
Any questions on the high school piece? Mr. Koba?
What are the equivalent guidelines for those classes in high school? You talked about for size.
So we don't exceed 30?
Okay.
And it, I'm sorry to answer it this way, it depends. So some AP courses, you're not going to put a particular guideline because you want to offer that. There may be some freshman courses that you're sitting at 28, 29 sometimes. So never exceeding 30.
Questions? Ms. Muller?
Are those two also from the core area?
We are looking at some different options, may not necessarily be from the core, but we are in the process of engaging in conversations with both principals.
And are those two, one from each school or two total somewhere?
One from each school. And we are looking at attrition as much as possible when we consider a position. So trying to minimize, reducing a staff member where we can. So that is some of the dialogue that we're engaging in.
Is the attrition approach across the board for any of the FTE reductions, is that always the first option to see where there is attrition? Or does it just depend on the scheduling exercise?
I mean, Ms. Kapaz can obviously talk more to that, but that's something that we always try to prioritize is that if we can fill a position without making a reduction to a staff member, we're always trying to go to that direction first.
But it really depends. Because if it's an ASL teacher, we're not, we're going to try to replace the ASL teacher. We're not going to just say, oh, an ASL teacher's leaving, so we're going to.
There is a.
Do you know what I mean? So it really depends.
Okay, thank you.
But the trickle down, I'm going to extend your question, if you may.
Please.
The trickle down of when we're not doing attrition is what people don't see. And that is, you know, we value all of our staff members from the very first year to someone who's in 36 years. But along the way, the domino that falls usually gets to the least senior teacher. And that's why reductions are taken at 65,000, not at higher steps. So you're pushing out your newest. And so we just need to talk about some organizational impact here, right? Like the stuff that doesn't make the concrete spreadsheet. And that is, teachers, it's a horrible pool out there. It's drying up. Teachers who are looking for jobs may read that we're laying people off because of these reductions. And so when you're recruiting and trying to retain, it doesn't make you an attractive school district.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that trickle down where the contractual obligations and the different reasons that go into the balancing, the FTE may be reduced at the high school level or at the middle school level. But the individual who is actually released from the district may come from an elementary school. They may come from a different place. So families in the district who look at this and say, oh, there are no cuts to FTEs at the elementary school level are going to be very surprised when they see some of their elementary school teachers aren't here next year.
We may not, so we talk FTEs language.
Yep.
Of the actual people.
That translates to real humans and people that kids and families love and follow. And a middle school FTE can translate to an elementary school teacher very easily. So I think that's an important part also on the backend that people don't always realize.
And I appreciate you bringing that up again, Ms. Muller, because I think two meetings ago, I asked us all to remember that these are people we're talking about and individuals we've gotten to know and whose families. You spend a lot of time with folks you work with, right? So you get to know them as humans. So even individuals who come to public comment and make conversation about positions on a spreadsheet, like, these are people that have invested their entire lives seeking advanced degrees to do good. advanced degrees to do good. So, it, while there are not elementary FTEs on here, depending on certification, you, we may see some people leaving elementary level.
Yes. People who have not just impacts on their own lives and their own commitment and investment in this district and part of the staff family, but who are also part of the school communities as well. So, that's a, that is a part to not overlook.
Any other questions on this item?
I'll take the next one. That is another eleven-eleven account, reduce district teacher leader. On the org chart, you have seen that we have a handful of teacher leaders, and if I may, just very quickly, these teacher leaders were put in at a budget-neutral place as well when we redefined intervention position into coaching. We knew that we had heavy lifting to occur in the areas of curriculum and assessment. So, it's the same FTE number that we've always had, we just utilize some at the school level and some at the district level. We always had a plan to start to phase out of teacher leaders as the curriculum started being completed and implemented. So, this budget reduction is just accelerating that plan. So, we, in addition to the one we already have that you approved, this is another teacher leader that will be coming out of the Teaching and Learning Department. And these people give real time every day in classroom teacher supports. So, when an individual talked about there are only two teacher, two district leader positions being reduced, that, and we should be looking at positions that do not, quote-unquote, should not impact our children, unquote, this position right here impacts teachers directly and in turn impacts children. So, even though that person's a district management person, I forget the word that was used earlier, this person is not sitting in office pushing up paperwork, this person is in classrooms oftentimes not able to be found because that person's on the ground, rolling up sleeves, teaching side-by-side with teachers or handling kids. So, that's that. Next one, unless there are questions.
So, just to reiterate what you just said, because I heard it a little bit differently than, I just want to make sure it's clear for the public.
Sorry.
There's, our regular operating budget we adopted already has one reduction of the teacher leader.
Yes.
So, this is.
This is a second.
Second reduction. So, there's two teacher leaders being reduced.
Actually, there are two district teacher leaders in the original budget. This is a third.
Third, okay, thank you.
Two, there's one coming out of your DPS department, one coming out of Teaching and Learning.
Okay, thank you. Any, Ms. Doyle?
I think that's the hard part here, is that these are people. They know who they are. They know their jobs. Like, they're not, like, they're not, like, not, and so the idea that we're having this conversation today, and there's another thirty days of school left, and to know what's happening and that things are changing, it's very difficult to sit here and have this discussion as we're going back and forth. I appreciate you sharing that. There is a plan. There's a plan. There was a plan to reduce the number of teacher leaders. It wasn't here yet. I think when I joined the board four years ago, one of the discussions we've had multiple times, and I think my head probably exploded, was there's no singular curriculum across the district that was the same, and there was needed coherence. And so, the idea that that didn't exist, when we have eight elementary schools, three middle schools, and two high schools, is kind of ludicrous in 2020 at the time. That's how I see it, and so it makes sense why we had flat test scores and all of those. And that takes people implementing a plan over and over and over again, and readjusting the plan and revising it and doing it. It doesn't happen by magic, doesn't happen by that, and it's interested, it's not interesting, it's working. We can see that in the data. And so, it's rich when people come in and say, oh, just reduce it. We're doing our jobs. You're doing what you're supposed to do. And so, I feel, it, thank you for pointing out it was three people in addition. Thank you.
Anybody else on this item? Okay, the next.
Okay, next one is still in the eleven-eleven. It's the reduction of an art teacher. And again, we mentioned to you that these are particularly not great ones because we've done so much work, especially at the middle school level, to ensure the voice and choice, whether it's the exploratory art, it's 2D art, 3D art. We are looking at decreasing an additional art teacher. We decreased one in the original budget process. As we look at the art teacher, again, with this and thinking about class sizes, specifically if we're looking at grade seven at Harborside, we would increase to an average of about sixteen. Grade seven was only about fifteen this particular school year. However, when we look at grade eight, we'd be going from an average class size of approximately eleven to about twenty students. So, we want to make sure that that is in front of you all as well, that we would also be anticipating increases, just like we saw with the core content teachers. We'd be seeing that with the UA teachers as well, and this is moving in the direction that we were hoping not to go in. We were hoping to be able to continue down, as Dr. Katia mentioned earlier, increasing the voice and choice, building towards some of these introductory career pathways that would build up to the high school. So, and we'll see kind of the same piece with the next one when we get into music as well.
Questions? Ms. Muller?
Again, just confirming, the underlying budget that we passed already had a reduction in this area.
Correct.
Of one FTE.
Correct.
So, this is a second additional one.
This will be a second 1.0.
And again, highlights the conversation that we just had. Yet again, it can be a lot of repetition tonight, because there's a lot of the same very terrible choices being made over and over and forced upon us, again, by seven individuals on the Board of Alderman who chose to prioritize different things than our children. But when we look at this and we see a reduction of FTEs at the middle school level, one FTE, art teacher at the middle school level, the teacher that is not here next year, when your kids show up, may not be a middle school teacher, it may be an elementary school teacher.
Right.
And it's important for parents to understand that.
Or high school.
Or high school. It could come from anywhere in the district. Yeah. So, the face that will be missing won't necessarily be a middle school face.
Other questions?
Same thing with the music teacher, as we move down, again impacting the middle school level. And I know Dr. Paris, her team, our principals have been great advocates for supporting the expansion of music programs throughout the district. We are fortunate that we have not only a band, chorus, and general music program, but we also are able to offer strings as part of the orchestra program. Again, reducing a teacher would impact the ability to run certain class sizes to a particular number of students. As we looked at numbers in terms of class sizes, I'll give you an example, band in grade seven would increase from about fifteen to seventeen students, chorus would remain consistent about twenty-seven students, and East Shore Middle School, depending on whether we're talking about strings, band, chorus, class sizes would range anywhere from twelve to about twenty-two students in a class section at, for music at that level.
Questions? Ms. Muller?
Reminder, was there a change made to FTEs for music at the level in the budget or no?
No, we did not decrease music. This is the first decrease in that area.
Is there an awareness at this point of whether or not that reduction in went to FTE will change the offerings at the middle school level? You said we're fortunate to be able to also offer strings along with band, chorus, general music. Will all four of those still be offered, just in larger sizes?
Yes, we would still offer all four of those opportunities. Again, depending on the school, the class sizes, the average class size will go up some degree, whether it's a few students to as much as, you know, looking at doubling the level of students in that class.
Is there, what is the process for determining what school will see the reduction in the position? Obviously, just like with the others, the face that's missing can come from anywhere.
Correct. And that same thing applies here as well. So, it may not be a middle school music educator that would be impacted.
Right. It could be somebody else, for sure. How do you decide amongst these, when there are three middle schools and one reduction in FTE, how that shakes out?
We have a split position right now that we're looking at, and it's an East Shore, Harborside split position that would form that 1.0.
Great.
So, it's a 0.5, 0.5 that would form the one.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the music?
Got a question for the, sorry, for the art and for the music? As they're reduced, what's the ease in bringing them back? The art and the music are categories that people, families love, and they like, the kids enjoy coming to school for art and music. So, what's the ease in, or what's the order that they, if in better times, would they come back? Would that be?
I mean, it's like any other staff position that we would look at. I mean, it's necessitated based on enrollments, class sizes, that determines how many sections of a particular program we offer. So, without looking into the future and seeing numbers, you know, there's nothing out of the realm of possibility. It depends on how many students and the number of staff members that we have at each of the schools to be able to offer that particular program.
I think in the middle school in particular, you'll see us come back with staff recommendations as related to our program improvements tied to our interest in developing career and college pathways at the middle school level. So, from an educational strategy perspective, when you're looking at organizational budgeting and programming improvement, asking for more FTEs during hard economic times and declining enrollment or plateaued enrollment is very hard to do. So, it all depends on the, we'll propose it, but it all depends on the flavor of the board, the will of the board, so.
So, just to clarify, other than potentially stymieing the voice and choice piece, the reduction in the staff FTEs is not going to eliminate art or music or any specific programs, it's within.
Increasing class size.
Just going to increase the class size a little bit.
And for the art, we have to just look at, instead of having the different, like, 2D, 3D separate, we're going to have to look at restructuring the art to include those opportunities all within the same course.
Okay. So, the opportunity is not going to be eliminated necessarily, it's just a larger class size. Okay, thank you. Anybody else on, Ms. Doyle?
Can you just, I think I understood you correctly, is that over time, as we develop, what I took away a little bit is that there is the opportunity to make classes bigger here, which is what is occurring here. However, if we didn't have this reduction, we would maintain our class sizes as they were, and as time would go, we would transfer EFTEs to more voice and choice and other opportunities for children, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's the hope and the dream, is that as we begin to expand programming down from the high school to build, similar what we do with art and music, we have that feeder that's building up to the high school level. We want to be able to do the same thing down to the middle school. We want to get kids excited about career pathways. As we think about our programming and our spaces at the two high schools, the hope would be to get students engaged and interacting in those particular pathways now as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So, as they go up to the high school, they have that passion, that excitement, it helps to shape out their future career trajectory as they go up.
So, in general, I mean, there, we're talking about the day-to-day operating right now, but this also affects our long-term again, to change, to plan for our future, to provide the hopes and dreams and all of those things. Because what we've experienced is, it's incredibly hard to add positions to a budget. We've learned. I mean, we worked on this discussion with the counselors. We had the planned move from the ARPA, SRFunds, to 2-2 over a period of time, so that we didn't have that fiscal cliff where we need to add six positions. And so, say we wanted to go and do another offering at another school, we may not have the opportunity to do it within the budget we have at that time we had to add, which across three schools or two schools or eight schools, takes a lot of time and then a lot of extra money ultimately. Okay, thank you.
Just.
Yes?
One thing that remind you, the effort that it takes and the intentionality behind that effort to responsibly grow an FTE count in a budget to respond to programming is very, very important to the people who approve this budget. The Board of Alderman has made that very clear, that that is a very important part to them, that there will not be a cliff where we suddenly have to add ten new positions. But they're perfectly okay allowing us to have a cliff in the other direction and chop them all of those. So, just want to highlight that again as a priority that feels a little misaligned with this board.
Anybody else on music?
Can I note, though, Ms. Gunn, I appreciate you saying that there isn't a program change, so that's important to underscore for our middle school families. But I feel compelled just to be a voice for teachers for a moment, not for just a moment, but in this particular moment, that going from a class of twelve to twenty-two. I'm going to just let that sit for a moment. So, while they shouldn't be at twelve, right, that's not the appropriate number of students there, but going from twelve to twenty-two or twelve to twenty-four, like some of the numbers we're looking at, is going to be a world of difference for teachers next year. So, we're, you know, we're saving some things, but there are some.
Their costs.
Huge consequences occurring that, it's just a few more kids, but we've been talking for a couple of years now, the impact on what's happening with middle school-aged children, and our kids are not okay, and they're not regulating, and now we're going to put twenty-four of them in a room where there used to be twelve. So, I don't want to miss that opportunity to say that on the part of teachers.
Ms. Gunn, can I just?
So, programming is the same, but.
Right.
Will programming be the same?
I mean, what I always took away from this budget was that you were, we responsibly reacted to the enrollment by decreasing FTEs in the original budget that came to us, so that we might increase class sizes from twelve to maybe seventeen versus twenty-two. And this is accelerating the process, who will have consequences for the students, for the teachers, for the staff. Because as much as we love the students, we, our job is to educate students, we also have a reputation as a community, and we have to support our teachers, because we're never going to be able to hire people back. I mean, I looked at the, this week, the TMD report, and there's, I don't know, half a dozen resignations that we usually don't see at this time of year, that I wouldn't anticipate, and so it's having an effect. I'm going to go to help. Yes, please.
Same story here, again. Ship, large class size shift here. So, we're talking about West Shore, looking at their average class size numbers. Thank you again to Mr. Hayes for all of his foresight, helping to plan through and think about our anticipations for class size. We'd be looking at going from an average of about eleven students to between twenty-two and twenty-six students with the reduction of the single health teacher, because now you would have one health staff member that would be seeing the entirety of all three grades, six, seven, and eight. With that being said, we do have the current seventh-grade health teacher also see some of the student development coursework. We would be shifting the student development for grade seven back to the school counselor, so the school counselors would now be facilitating and instructing the student development courses, so that one health staff member would be contacting all students, grades six, seven, and eight, across the different quarters of the school year.
So, it is a quarter course? Quarter?
So, again, large class size jump there.
Ms. Walton? So, is, and I'm sorry for not remembering, so, we have how many health instructors?
There's two at West Shore currently.
Currently, and?
One at East Shore and one at Harvard?
So, there is one at each school, at least one at each school now. But by eliminating this position, we're going to go up to twenty-seven?
Twenty-two to twenty-six, depending on the class section.
Twenty-two to twenty-six. Twenty-two to twenty-six in a health class.
Correct.
Which won't impact programming, but will impact programming.
It would impact, again, as Dr. Katia mentioned.
Yeah.
It's, a class of twenty-two is very different from a class of eleven or twelve. With the activities that you run, with the management, the transitions, all of those things are impacted.
Well, I'm just thinking about the nature of what's covered in health class as well and some of the topics that you might have to talk about. You know, it's hard enough to talk in front of maybe, you know, six or seven, let alone that many.
And the complexity of our health curriculum has grown since the new health, uh, standards have come out. Everything from, you know, the, the typical nutrition to a lot of the social, emotional growth and development topics that are there now.
Which are state mandated?
State mandated, yes.
Ms. Doyle?
I'm going to ask a very difficult question. If we had, it's not on the table, it's not occurring. If we had decided to close Harbor Side, would it impacted class sizes this much?
That's a crystal ball question. We did some preliminary work on, um, closing a middle school and we used, uh, twenty-two to twenty-four as a, a rule of thumb when we were doing that. That was back in March though. So I think it depends. It depends on how, you know, how do you get to one point three?
Right, it's very difficult. It's where we're running.
Cause there are other savings when you close a, a school.
Right.
So it's not, there are other things that you get to strip away. So you don't have to go after FTEs at all levels.
Right.
Right?
Um, in the same vein, but directed back to help, um, so the school counselors now are gonna be helping with the student development. So that means they're taken away from their more student counselor focus.
So just, just for clarification, the school counselors are already doing some of the, um, student wellness and development courses. There was the opportunity at West Shore only
Okay.
for the health teacher to pick up that seventh grade, um, just because of some additional demands that the counselors there are dealing with. So, um, now that opportunity to give those counselors more time to address those demands will just be diminished.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the health piece? Go on to the next.
Uh, next one comes out of account eleven fourteen and that was the reduction of summer school. Uh, so currently we have three, uh, subprograms that fall under summer school. We have the elementary literacy and numeracy program. Uh, we have a middle school literacy and numeracy, we call them bootcamps or summer camps. Uh, and then we also have the credit recovery program, which is at the high school level and that supports the, uh, restoration of lost credit for students. Uh, with account eleven fourteen, we'd be looking at the reduction of the elementary and middle school, summer school programs. Again, um, not great news, uh, has the potential to widen achievement gap, some of the things that are listed here. Uh, we know summer learning loss is a thing that is, is real for students when they return to school in the fall. Um, and, you know, obviously reducing opportunities to accelerate student learning. Um, we are not looking at removing the credit recovery program for the high schools out of this. Uh, about forty-six thousand dollars of the sixty thousand would be targeted towards the elementary summer school program. Uh, the remaining fourteen thousand would be, uh, program costs for the middle school side of that program. It does not impact the E S Y program. That is a completely separate, the special education side, um, is not affected by this reduction.
Questions on this? Ms. Muller?
Not being super familiar with elementary school, summer school offerings, so forgive me for taking a little step back here on that. When we read the description on here and it talks about academic support versus enrichment opportunities. We use enrichment in different, in a context in the district to generally mean more, above and beyond, something that enriches rather than something that I would think of as defined as a bootcamp that helps you catch up or stay where you should be to, to decrease that achievement gap. What of this elementary and middle school, when you talk about the math and the ELA at both levels, what of that forty-six and what of that fourteen goes towards enrichment opportunities versus the academic support decreasing the achievement gap?
So I think you ask a great question. So to me, when I think of enrichment, whether you're talking about opportunities for like the academic support, there is opportunities there to get students immersed in the content in a way that would enrich their interests, their growth as a learner. Um, this year for the elementary portion, we were looking at changing up the program a little bit and going to, uh, more, uh, opportunities for kids to choose something of interest to them. So rather than just calling it a literacy bootcamp, it may have been fairy tales and folktales. So students get the literacy support through a more interactive and engaging and authentic application of the content. Um, so when we talk about enrichment in that case, we were looking at, just for elementary this year, looking for our rising first through third graders at prioritizing that opportunity. Middle school, six through eight would stay the same. That would be the true support where we're able to connect students that may benefit from that additional time over the summer. Uh, and our instructional supervisor team works very closely with our director of summer school to plan out the curriculum for both the literacy and the numeracy side, um, of that particular bootcamp. So you can't really break it apart to me when you talk about academic acceleration and enrichment. If you're getting kids engaged, you're getting them interested, you're doing both at the same time. You're supporting them while pushing them to expand their learning.
So the, the forty-six that's in here, I think I'm gonna reiterate what you just said. There's not a distinct enrichment program that's a separate lane from the academic support channel. It's just the type of academic support being offered at the elementary school is done through that more enriching lens in order to engage students at that level so that they continue to get the academic support and reduce that gap.
Correct. We tried to, to innovate a little bit this year with the program offerings.
And asterisk, we were launching it in that way to experiment if we could turn it into a tuition-based for other families to say, my child may not need the bootcamp part, but I would love for my child to remain in some literacy-rich environment and hence possibly create a tuition-based summer experience that would offset what the impact on the budget is. So we were envisioning it, it's not something new, but we, it's the same thing.
Sure, is, so the forty-six is the re-envisioning or not?
No, so we tried to make, make sure that
Forty-six is for summer school.
Was there now.
The cost that it would have been prior to that is the same as the
Same cost. Old model, revision, same cost.
Got it, okay. And so if, with this reduction here, if that forty-six comes out, we do not do that at all?
There's no summer school experience for elementary or middle school students if you remove the sixty.
Okay.
There's nothing old, there's nothing new, there's just nothing.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, uh, going into account eleven eighteen, this is a reduction of curriculum work in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, I think we've talked to you a lot about the fact that we have a curriculum revision cycle and calendar uh, that our instructional supervisor team has done amazing work at trying to make sure that we, we stick to that with some efficacy each year. Um, and the work that they've done, again, as Dr. Katia mentioned earlier, our teacher leaders also support a lot of that curriculum development work. Uh, again, any delay to the calendar would lead to impacting the quality and relevance of the educational opportunities as our, our written curriculum helps to drive those. Um, reductions in the area could delay the scope and sequence, uh, for things like our student success planning at the middle school level, which was one of the, um, opportunities we were looking at doing this summer. Um, and it could also significantly limit, uh, high school curriculum work for the elective courses. So, uh, thinking about our core courses and our elective courses, um, it would impact, uh, especially in the STEM areas, opportunities to, um, do the development of those high school elective courses.
Questions on this? All right, thank you, go on to the next.
This next one comes from account eleven twenty-one. And this is reduced high school secretaries, one at each high school. Uh, and reduction of a secretary at each of the two high schools would cause us to redistribute workloads among the other secretaries. This would result in decreased efficiency, longer response time, uh, delays in communication, things of that nature. And like you mentioned before, this is another one of those staff, um, components that we take very, um, we don't take it lightly and this is something that, um, you know, comes with a, a long, hard consideration piece to it as well. And that, that workload distribution would definitely impact the productivity and outcome of those other secretaries that are taking on that burden.
Questions? Ms. Wilton?
So why, why the high schools and not one of the other types of schools?
Yeah, so typically at, like, for instance, at the elementary level, there's only one secretary in that building.
Right.
And so it scales up as you get to the different levels. Um, so at the elementary level, there just is, there's none to be reduced at that level.
And what's the difference between the middle and high?
Uh, the middle, the middle schools have, uh, two secretaries. And the high school has, uh, seven secretaries.
And are all those secretaries in the main office or they divided like into guidance and?
Those are spread throughout the building, yes.
They don't, they all have different, um, roles. So there's a data processor, there's a bookkeeper, there's a college career center advisor. So those three are in the secretaries unit, union, so those would be considered secretaries. So even though that's the title, they all have speci, specific jobs that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate at the elementary.
Okay, so it might not actually be a secretary?
It is, so they're all secretaries, secretaries' union.
Yes, it'll be someone who's part of the secretaries' union.
Yes.
But may not necessarily be someone who we consider a traditional secretary.
So for the purpose of our public conversation is from the secretaries' union.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Questions? Next?
And, uh, similarly, eleven twenty-two account, uh, reduce high school custodians, one at each high school. Uh, so reducing a high school custodian at each of the high schools would likely, uh, lead to less frequent, uh, cleaning and potential less thorough cleaning. Uh, this would impact both the interior of the buildings and also impact, uh, the grounds. So that's something to keep in mind as well too.
How, how many, uh, custodians do we have at each high school?
We have eleven at each high school.
Questions? Ms. Erby?
When the high schools are used for other events, we, do we charge for the custodian care?
Uh, yes, so, um, if it's on, yeah, so if it's outside of their specific hours that they work, so specifically the weekends, uh, would be something that we would charge, uh, somebody that's renting the facilities, for instance.
Will, will we char them, charge them more in the upcoming year?
Would we charge them more, um, so not necessarily. So we have set our guidelines, um, we could possibly revisit that as well. That's something that we could always possibly revisit, but we just actually did a re-analysis of our, uh, rates, uh, two, a year and a half ago. So we just actually raised them significantly. I think it was almost doubling the cost to, uh, using facilities. So just a year and a half ago, we did do that.
Can you refresh my memory, I think I heard this once before, um, the facility fees don't come to us, right?
That is accurate.
They go to the city.
Yes, so we know.
The custodial fees come to us?
Custodial fees would, yes, if we charge custodial fees, those would come back to offset the cost of our custodians, which come out of our budget. But any money that we receive from use of our facilities goes directly to the city, so it doesn't offset any cost in our budget. Because those are city buildings. Saw a pending question coming.
You were correct. Absolutely.
Any question on the custodians?
And it's also, I, I, just one more, I apologize, uh, one more, uh, piece to this too. I know, you know, on the surface that may seem like a large number of custodians, but I wanna keep in mind here that the square footage at each of our two high schools is massive. So we have two hundred and twenty thousand at one high school and two hundred and forty thousand square feet at the other high school. Uh, we have crews that are running, i- it's all day and all night. So we have a number of events there, after-school activities, clubs, sports, uh, outside the building, inside the building. So if you think of just the acreage and the square feet that we actually have in each of these locations, it's massive. So I wanna keep that in consideration too, because when you hear that number eleven, it sounds like a lot, but when you actually consider what it is that they're actually doing, it is, it is not an over amount of custodians that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
This is, um, um, what falls under Mr. Bradbury versus everyday activity in terms of like the athletic fields or things like that, in terms of maintenance? I know the baseball fields and softball fields are now turf, but I'm just thinking about like when they used to like prepare the fields and things like that. Would that fall under normal scope of?
Yes, that, that would fall under the nor, normal scope of our custodians. Um, there still is, uh, some maintenance that needs to be done with the turf field, so albeit it's not as, uh, much of a field that would need to be cut. Um, but there's also a lot of grounds around those fields, so even though the actual field itself may be, uh, turf, there's also grass and weeding and garbage that accumulates on the area. There's a, like we mentioned before, there's a lot of acreage that they would need to
Right.
cover, but yes, those are, um, included in the responsibilities of those custodians.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wilton?
I just wanna go back to this custodian fee thing for one second.
Sure.
Because I, I'm sure I did not hear you correctly. So if our custodians work, let's say on a Saturday, right, and we're paying them overtime, we pay the overtime, but the money that might come in from a rented event doesn't come to us to cover it, but goes to the city.
So let me, yeah, so let me clarify that then.
Help me, please.
So there are, uh, in our facilities use fees, there is the building use fee, but then there's also the custodians piece that's separate. So we would charge for this situation, the facilities use fee for actually using the actual site and then we would charge the custodians fee separate. That custodians fee that we're charging does come to us. So we wouldn't be necessarily losing money on that piece. Anything that we would receive from the actual facility itself rental, that's the part that goes to the city.
And roughly how much should we give to the city each year from that?
Uh, so off the top of my head, uh,
Rough number?
Can we get back to you?
We can get back to you.
Sure. I don't think it impacts the budget, but.
It, it doesn't, it, it
No.
None of it comes to our funds, so it's, it's, you know, it's an off, I mean, if it comes into our funds, it's given back to the city. So it doesn't impact our budget per se at all.
Can you clarify when you updated those amounts, please, as well?
Yeah, so it was the, two years ago, it was the summer of twenty-three.
Okay.
When Mr. Richatelli left, right?
Right when Mr. Richatelli left, yeah.
Okay.
June of, May, June of twenty, twenty-three.
Any other questions on the custodians? All right, next is the community connection coordinator?
Next is a item, account number eleven twenty-nine, reduce the community connection coordinator. So this would be, um, reduction of the second, uh, community connection center. One is already in the budget, this would be the second one. Uh, the community connection center, uh, works with families, uh, to provide them, or get them connected with resources, on things like childcare, parenting skills, literacy skills, food insecurity, job search, financial assistance. They have a website, on our website, um, they, uh, there are two, currently there are two coordinators, one at Pumpkin Delight, one at Cap Pen. They split the district in half and provide, uh, families primarily, uh, at the elementary level, uh, and then rising into middle school. We would reduce this, um, second community connection center and Mr. Artiri and I have started conversations if this would be approved through the board, that we would try to, um, uh, really, uh, beef up and further develop the family resource center that we have, that we received some funds for. So I'll let you talk a little bit about the possibility of making, uh, that connection.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, our community connections coordinator staff meet at least one time per week with, uh, all of the buildings, respective buildings throughout the district to determine supports that are available to students. Um, and speaking to some of our staff, including, uh, Ms. McGuire, uh, about feasibility of, of the family resource center staff. Currently, we have one full-time and one part-time staff member in the F R. Currently, we have one full-time and one part-time staff member in the FRC. Um, right now, they facilitate playgroups for infants through pre-K age students. Um, and it differs, it could be anywhere from two to three times per week for about sixty minutes, um, each opportunity. Uh, not really, uh, you know, anything too expansive in terms of working with the schools or supporting families. Um, we would need to look at just some restructuring of responsibilities to increase the connections that they would have, to supporting families, um, connections to as we, as we transition from the school readiness program to the new local governance partnership. Uh, we do have parent ambassadors that are part of that work, so we would look to see if they would help to support our parent ambassadors with our, our school readiness program. Um, but opportunities to support a lot of the connections. We also currently, right now, network with Temple Beth El, uh, Food to Kids, Purple Pantry, a lot of different community organizations that are, are supported through the work of the Community Connection Center. So, obviously, being in a wonderful community such as Milford, we would continue to look at strengthening those partnerships and connecting families to some of those opportunities. Um, but again, I, I don't want to undervalue the important role that the Community Connections Coordinator staff does. Everything from reaching out to families if students are absent, to helping them get back into school. Um, we had a, a family that lost a parent, and they were able to help support with connections to grief counseling, so, um, a tremendous resource. Uh, we would be looking at other opportunities that we have within the district and with one of, some of our organizational partners to help, uh, continue to support families across our eight elementary schools.
Can you, uh, name what some of those organizational partners were?
Uh, Temple Beth El, I think they have a clothing closet that they will often refer families to, uh, Food to Kids, uh, Purple Pantry was another one that came up quite a bit. Uh, those were some of the, the main organizations that they will often work in partnership with to support families.
Ms. Will Boynton? So, I, I really appreciate hearing that you're, you've been having conversations about how you might, um, replace this position, which, just to clarify, this is one coordinator for the entire school district?
It's two currently, we split down the.
There's, one is already gone.
Correct.
One is already gone.
One would be removed within the company.
So, this would be the second one removed.
Correct.
So, there would be zero coordinators.
That is correct.
Okay, um, so just, I just wanted to be clear about that. And, and I do, I appreciate the idea of, you know, trying to turn to the Family Resource Center and looking, um, for ways that at least some of the services that the Community Connection Coordinator provided. But what happens to our families in the meantime? You know, this, to me, this is very much an equity issue. And we all know that being successful in school, um, requires so much more than the best teachers and the best books. You know, you have to, you have to come in with a mindset of being ready to learn, of feeling safe and secure, about not worrying if your house is about to be foreclosed on, about not worrying, um, you know, if you're going to have clean clothes to wear today because maybe there's some reason that, you know, your mom can't get them over to the laundromat because they might not have transportation that day, maybe dad has the car at work and they only have one car. You know, food insecurity, um, you know, in volunteer work that I do with the community here, you know, pretty much every single food pantry in Milford, um, is seeing just a huge drop in donations. There was a period at the Milford Food Bank last month where I, if you happen to see their Facebook page, they had like six cans of peas on the shelves. There was nothing else there because the need is so great. So, I, you know what, we're the little city with the big hearts. Um, I don't see how we as a city could ever stand to allow this kind of support to be taken away from our children. And, like I said, you know, our demographic has changed hugely in Milford. Um, and it seems that it is not being seen across the city for what it is. Um, and if we are not taking care of our children, and particularly the most vulnerable of our children, who are all so vulnerable to begin with, um, how can we look at ourselves in the mirror? So, to me, personally, this is a position that I will throw myself on the sword for. Because, um, when we have kids starting to come to school hungry or embarrassed because of the clothes that they're wearing, not wanting to come, worrying about problems that perhaps we could refer them to a resource to help them. Um, and you know what, even with, even in the best of times, even with three community coordinators, four community coordinators, there would still be children who, who were not recognized, who were not helped. So, uh, again, I appreciate so much you trying to, um, come up with a solution for this, but I don't see one, and it's heartbreaking.
Ms. Will Boynton, uh, and again, it's hard to talk about this without sounding like we're undervaluing our current staff, so please know that, that this wasn't on the recommendation list to remove both initially.
I know that, I know that.
But I also, just some food for thought, because all of these decisions have a, two sides of a coin. Uh, something to think about that, uh, at every elementary school, we have a school counselor, a social worker, and a school psych. Those are three significant resources, uh, individuals that see these kids every day, as opposed to once a week. And we're, those are another set of eyes and a, another set of hands to help kids and families get connected with the resources and support they need. So, just know that it, this doesn't completely wipe out all support, that there are other individuals that play a part in this with our communication, community coordinators, so. And know that those supports also exist at the middle and high. So, it, it's not that there will be nothing, it, there'll be one less set of hands.
And I appreciate all that, but it's still, in my opinion, not enough.
Other questions on this or comments? Uh, Ms. Preet?
I have a question, um, so the Family Resource Center, is that part of the City of Milford's Health and Human Services? Or can you, um, describe, or is there already a relationship on the Health and Human Services side with the city and the public, in the schools?
Part of the school district, but they do work closely with community partners, including MPC, things like that is. Um, so it is, it's part of our, our staff, we do receive grant funding to support the program.
Okay, so there's a relationship and we'll continue and down that, uh, relationship and build on it, right, so, okay.
Yeah. That's what we'd be looking to do.
We're looking at expanding the service beyond the, the early childhood age.
Uh, do we currently actively work with the, uh, Human Services Department in Milford?
I have to get you an answer to that, I don't, I don't know for sure what the extent of their relationship is.
Any other questions on this one? Mr. Scobie?
I just kind of wanted to jump in with what Cindy was saying as well. And I appreciate the fact that you are already looking at the Family Resource, Resource Center and that you have the guidance counselors and the teachers, I mean, the teachers are usually the first line of defense in this type of thing. They see the students every day, and will be, be the ones that speak up about this. Um, I just kind of want to reiterate the fact that, you know, working in education, typically what we see when students are falling behind, it's, there's this, you know, stereotype or myth that it's just because students are lazy. And what I've found is it's typically not because they're lazy, it's because their mental bandwidth is taken up by things that are going on outside of school. Right, we all have jobs, and we have our life outside of our jobs. They have school, and then they have life that is going on outside of the school. And a lot of the times, when you notice somebody's falling behind, you sit them down, you start asking them what's going on, and that's when you start to learn, oh, you know what, my family didn't eat dinner last night. And like, I just want everyone to kind of think about the last time they were at work, and they worked from when they came in to when they went home. And, you know, you missed that lunch, and the whole time you're thinking about, man, I'm so hungry, I wish I could be eating a burger right now instead of doing these scratch sheets, right? Students go through that same feeling. And a position like this is just one more line of defense. Like I mentioned, teachers are really where this starts. The teachers are the ones that are noticed that the students are kind of off, and they can reach out, ask the counselors to reach out, ask this, um, Community Connection Coordinator to reach out, and it just helps support the students more. Um, a centralized person can provide that extra assistance to the parents, that can then provide that assistance to the students. And so, um, yeah, like I said, very grateful that there's that Family Resource Center and the counselors and the teachers all there, but I think this additional person is going to be what really helps out. You mentioned that when a student lost a parent, this person is the one that had called out to reach out to make sure that they were doing well. Doing well is a terrible way to put it, but support them through their grief to help them get back into school. Um, so, I'm kind of with Cindy on this one, this is a hill that I plan to fight on.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, we'll move on to the next.
So, I have account number seventy-three fifty, uh, re- reduction of technology and infrastructure updates. This includes, uh, two servers and twenty desktop replacements. And the desktop replacements are important because Windows ten is, uh, no longer going to be supported for security upgrades as of October, um, twenty twenty-five. And so, this is the end of our five-year cycle, you know, I, I planned these things out, I knew this was coming, so this is just part of that particular, particular reduction.
Can, can you, uh, say the second part again about the desktop replacements?
Yeah, so this includes twenty desktop replacements, um, at about a thousand dollars each.
And those desktop replacements are at the?
They're at their end of life, um, Windows ten support ends in October of this year. So, they, and these can't be upgraded to Windows eleven.
So, without, without the funding, you lose twenty computers, twenty desktops?
We'll, we'll have to figure it out, but in essence, yes, yeah.
I mean, if they're past their life and they can't be upgraded anymore, then you can't really.
So, we, we would run it with a security risk, basically.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I was getting, I'll say next.
Yeah, so with Windows ten, there's no more security upgrades. Um, so, we would, we would just run with the risk, put it into a, a lower prior, a, a lower risk category, staff member, right?
And, and that's part of your five-years replacement cycle?
Correct.
Which is a good thing to have, right, a replacement cycle?
Yeah, just like our Chromebooks, we have a five-year replacement cycle.
Thank you, any other questions on this?
Windows ten is not being supported anymore because it is so old, they're not supporting it anymore, like. The machine, to Sue's point, it's not going to break, you're just going to run it in incredibly vulnerable, very old, kind of already are, state.
Yeah.
When you upgrade it, what will it become?
It'll be Windows eleven, sort of the newest one.
Fully supported?
Fully supported.
Right, regular security updates, patching, vulnerabilities, the whole thing.
That's correct.
Where are those twenty almost completely obsolete desktops currently positioned around the district?
So, currently, we're just about done, so it's the, basically, the last twenty that we have left. Um, they're probably more like special ed teachers, um, like places where maybe a social worker, psychologist type office. So, offices in the schools, definitely not, central office, and definitely not our financial, you know, anybody who has access to our financials are already been upgraded.
We have a lot of very important protected information beyond just our financials, which tend to exist in the offices that you just talked about, which talk to and report on and operate within the space of some of our more personal situations with our students. So, when we're talking, sorry, I'm still wrapping my head around the fact that we've got twenty desktops that are on Windows ten. Um, on the servers question, explain to us what happens if we don't?
So, right now, it would just break our, again, our replacement cycle of the servers. Um, that's not as vulnerable as far as operating system goes. Um, but it would still be, you know, it's just going to break our replacement cycle. So, something could break, and now I have to replace hard drives with repairs, um, you know, that, that type of stuff. So, I'd have to try to, maybe I can extend, um, a warranty on, on those, because we keep them fully warranted. Um, if I can, I would probably try to do that.
Okay, thank you. So.
Yeah, um, real quick, uh, because I prefer to not just blindly trust Google, but ask an expert. Real quick, it looks like Windows ten was released in twenty fifteen?
I think you're correct.
So, it's, it's an operating system, and that's a decade old? Okay, just, thank you.
It is fully supported right now.
Right.
And it's patched, but as of October, they're going to stop.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around the technology used a decade ago.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify, the reduction that has been proposed by administration is sixty-four thousand dollars?
Correct.
So, would you just not do as much? I mean, you, the budget here was, um, three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So, most of that are leases for our, um, our student Chromebooks.
Right, I see that, a lot of leases.
Yeah.
Okay, got you, thanks.
And then there's some, you know, like, if you look, this number is, um, a little bit less than we had said in April
Right.
because we put the security desktops back on.
Oh, okay, I see, I see the difference here, I see it, I'm looking at, all right, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Which relates to our cameras, that, that's what that security is.
Okay, another clarifying on that, with the two servers and the twenty desktops needing to be upgraded of that sixty-four, is that an all or nothing expenditure, or is that an expenditure where if you got a thousand extra bucks, now it's nineteen, not twenty? Is that, is there, is there a movable number in there?
Yeah, it's outlined on eight twenty-four. So, it's, um, twenty desktops at a thousand, so exactly what you said.
Right, exactly, I, I understand the twenty desktops at a thousand, that's pretty basic, but it's not like all twenty have to be replaced at the same time, it could be a different amount, okay, thank you, just clarifying that piece.
Oh, no, yeah, no.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, last one?
Uh, Ms. Glenn, with permission, I'd like to go back to Ms. Will Boynton's question really quickly, if possible.
Which one?
The one that she had about the facilities fees that we collected?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Sure, so I went back to one of my, the B A reports from last year, so this is for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. We collected approximately twenty-four thousand dollars in facilities fees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and this last one we have on the spreadsheet here is seventy-three, account seventy-three ninety-two, which is capital equipment. And this would be reducing a work truck, which would likely decrease the efficiency and responsiveness of our maintenance department and addressing the repairs and upkeep across our district. Uh, it could potentially lead to delays in addressing these issues or result in the need for additional unexpected, uh, fees when we address emergency repairs.
Questions on this? Okay, none. Um, do we have questions on, um, other items? So, I, I have one, um. So, on your original list, we had, um, reduce equipment, line seventy-three ten, which is not on tonight's list. So, your proposal is to maintain that amount of money. Can you, um, give us, what would be the effect of reducing, um, some of that line, seventy-three ten, um, equipment?
Yes, I could speak to the, uh, maintenance ones. So, these maintenance items on here are, are much needed, and just with collaboration with Mr. Bradbury, many of these items are on their last leg. So, uh, reduction of these would result in certain items, certain areas of the school not being cut. Um, a lot of, some, like, for instance, the, um, mount lawnmower and the field brush mower, those specifically are ones that, um, pertain to outdoor upkeep. So, having one less of those in the fleet would result in those grounds not being, or be kept up. The ones that we currently have are aging out and on their last leg. The black trailer is the one that. The black trailer is the one that moves small equipment around the district. So not being able to utilize this trailer would result in not being able to move equipment throughout the district. And then we have also the, like the golf cart is on there as well, too. That's one that we currently have very old, used golf carts. And those are the ones that our, our maintenance department uses throughout the grounds to quickly and efficiently get from one area to another while they're maintaining it outside.
Do you recall in your original list, the reduction was two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars?
Right.
That's correct.
Which, which was all but the C, all but the, the micro, all but the special ed pieces, that's right, okay. All right.
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions on this, Ms. Mahler?
I feel like the, we're, we're hitting up a little cage match here between the maintenance equipment that is aging out and ready to be replaced on a regular cycle versus the desktops that are aging out and ready to be replaced on a regular cycle. Ding ding ding, ding 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 ding. One of, one of which is introducing a security vulnerability potentially into the system and the other of which is potentially making it difficult to continue to maintain grounds. So that's a, an interesting position for all of us to be in. And again, unfortunate that we're here because of seven individuals having different priorities, but I tend to think both of those are fairly equal priorities and it's unfortunate that we have to choose among them.
Ms. Doyle?
Two questions. We just replaced all these turf fields, didn't we? So if we don't upkeep them, there could be problems, right?
Correct, and some of these in particular, like that field brush mower. So specifically, if you think of that hill on the backside of...
Law.
Law, um, I was, there's one at law as well. But I was thinking the four and one on the backside of the building by the tech wing. That, that mower is specific to that type of grass, because it's a safety issue. If you don't have the correct type of mower on the hill, that's steep. So it's not just maintaining the grounds on the turf fields, although that is part of it. It's all the grounds that are throughout the building.
Of this, do you want to... The turf fields themselves are professionally maintained, right?
They are, yeah. We, so Mr. Bradbury has them regularly cleaned and they, they go through a process where they pull up all the pellets on there. They have a special machine for that. That's contracted out. We don't own that actual machine, so we contract out, they pull those pellets out, clean them.
So this is more for the grass around?
Grass, yeah, in the areas throughout the buildings that would, you know, surround those turf fields.
Got it. The other half of this equipment line is the security, I think, is what's on there?
Yes.
How far, I mean, how far are we out of our normals? We had a cycle and the cycle keeps like, we are so far out of cycle.
We keep slowing it down. So when, let's just say we have a hundred cameras replaced each year for five years. First time around, I'll say, all right, Jeff, seventy-five. And then another time around, okay, we got a fifty. And now we're negotiating forty-five, so it just slows it down.
These are, these are cuts that are happening before we even bring this budget forward to the board.
Right, I mean, that's one thing we've, the, the security cameras keep coming up and up and up. All right, thank you.
Other questions? I did have one more. Wait, where's my questions? So also, you had on here a series of potential reductions for the per pupil allocations. Ten percent, twenty percent. So what, what would be the effect of reducing the per pu, per pupil allocation line?
So we would reduce that across all the accounts in the six thousands. So there's various accounts there. So if we would take ten percent of that, that ten percent would come distributed across all those different accounts. Instruction supplies, non-instruction supplies, and...
Textbooks, textbook options, library options.
Yeah, I had noted here, library books, consumables, manipulatives, student activity items, student activity resources, resources the school counselors use.
Library media, crayons, stuff like that.
So it would just mean less money for those things, basically.
That is a question.
Mostly at the building level.
At the building level, right.
Those are accounts that, this is the question. Those are accounts that are fully run by building administrators for their specific locations.
Most fully. In some cases, I'm just laughing at the most fully.
Fully to an extent that, you know...
So in some cases, there are some software packages. Because of state accounting purposes, we ask principals, okay, you must budget fifteen thousand in this software line for your, I don't know, I'm going to make it up, Navions, something like that. So for most fully in their hands.
So...
Almost fully.
That line is most fully owned, run, operated entirely by building administrators. So anything that impacts that line directly impacts our building administrators and their ability to do what they see on the ground as needing to be done in their building.
Yes, and which is also done in partnership with their teachers. So they're not just saying, ooh, hee hee hee, I have a pot of money, so...
I mean, I'm assuming they're not locking the closet, going, let's get all the cool pencils and not telling me.
They're, they're working with their, their leaders, curriculum leaders, department heads.
But it's the people on the ground, seeing what is needed in the building and buying the things needed in their building in these categories here. Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yep. So at the April fourteenth meeting, I was looking for an understanding of our after-school clubs at the three...
Yes.
Middle schools. So I just want to understand enrollment and what it's like. I'm sure it's valuable, I just want to understand the program.
Great, we have the information you requested, Ms. Preet. Take a moment for that to get around. It might be some for the public to share. So thanks to our school administrators for putting this information together for us.
All board members have one? And are these, how many are driven, the teacher stipends, so GSA at West Shore? What does GSA stand for?
Teacher's allowance.
Okay, they're all teacher stipends, every single one of them.
Can I just get administrator to confirm that?
Okay, sure.
Yep, thank you.
In some cases, maybe two teacher stipends pending, right?
Is that the information you were looking for, Ms. Preet?
No, this is great. Because the only thought that came to me, a suggestion, a conversation with someone was to see if we could somehow, because the total of those two light items, eliminate the after-school stipends, every mobility buses, came to one-ninety-seven-one-teen, seven-eighteen. Whether we could consider working them into the school day during an ASA period or the, what's the other time during the day? Not ASA. Advisory. I'm not sure how, what the timeframes are on those. Can we talk about that? Can we open up that conversation of whether that would be a possibility? This way, you know, maybe kids who cannot attend after-school activities due to lessons or sports or family obligations would then have more of an opportunity during the day. But also knowing that our, our teachers might be available more during the day as opposed to after-school. What would be sort of the pros and cons of working it into the school? They would obviously eliminate the, the late buses, which was the total of ninety-four thousand. And in, you know, in trying to work this, work these numbers a little differently, mainly the ninety-six thousand for the stipends that are current, and try to help out on the... My thinking was more of the middle school classroom teachers, your, your, your regular classes that, you know, where it would increase by reducing the four-point-oh that we have as a option. Maybe trying to alleviate one or two or three of those positions and bring them back in. My focus more was for the, the, the classes, the standard classes, your, you know, your, your English and your science and that sort of thing.
So you're looking at an opportunity to offset the number of MTE reductions at the middle school?
Yeah, for the ninety-six, somehow we can work that ninety-six. I mean, the teachers would still...
So it'd be like one and a half teachers. So I, I think it's worth dialoguing. And I invite our school principals to jump in and correct me. Because certainly don't want to breathe the wrong information into the universe here and Ms. Kapazna as well, from a contract perspective. But the recommendation we made in the chart that you received in April was to eliminate clubs. I don't believe that we get, get out of paying stipends if they're moved during the day, because a club is a club. It's, you can't ask a teacher to run something or plan for something without compensating for that. So we, that would probably need to be negotiated, actually. We'd have to go back to the union and say, hey, how do you feel about us moving clubs during the day and not paying your teachers for it? That probably won't go well. So that's one thing. But let me just clarify, ASA is opportunity for students to receive, in, in some cases, specialized services through an IEP. Some students to receive additional support in any of the core areas. So if a child asks for help, the teacher says, you need to come during ASA. And kids are not given option for that. Teacher says, you will come and get support, right? So from an equity lens, actually, there's also a group of students that you'd be leaving out. So a kid who has an IEP or is struggling in reading will not be able to attend club because they're going for additional supports. And I don't think it'll save the stipend money. We'd have to talk to the MEA about that. So I think the only way to save money with clubs is to completely eliminate them in the after-school. And advisory is very specific in that it, in the contract, that it's something that we would ask teachers not to plan for. They're facilitators of, so I, I really think the bottom line of that, Ms. Preet, is without having the opportunity to sit with the union to talk about it, is I, I don't think we'd be able to just put a club during the day and eliminate that stipend and save us a bunch of money and let, but make teachers do it anyway. And I did talk to a principal about this late today. There may be teachers, because they don't have to stay after school, there may be more teachers interested in it. So it actually could cause more of a, a budget problem. And that more teachers will be running during the day clubs and we'd be paying more stipends. So great for our kids, but not a budget savings.
So looking at this list as well, some of these intramuros, ski club, those...
That's hard to do during...
Could not happen during the day. So there would be...
Yeah, and pulling seventy-six kids for drama. And drama is supported, if I'm correctly, by parents. So grabbing parents during the day, during the workday, probably you're eliminating some opportunities for volunteerism. Ski club is run primarily by parents, so that would work. And I do think that there is a climate of after-school club kind of stuff, that kids with common interests across grade levels have to come together, so like Dungeons and Dragons. First of all, so cool that that's happening again. But if you did ASA or advisory, it would be same grade level. You wouldn't be able to mix kids across grade levels, because ASA happens by grade level. Advisory happens by grade level. So now you're going to do sixth grade Dungeons and Dragons instead of just Dungeons and Dragons, so...
Can I just ask a question about this generally?
Yes.
Because this, this, the, the, the clubs are student-driven, right?
You mean interest-wise?
Interest-wise. So the, the students can come and say, I want to start the...
Yes.
Ski club, I want to start this. There's a reason, there is a ski club at all three schools, but there's not...
Or there may be a staff member that has a real love for something and gets some kids riled up about it and now...
Right, because each, if I remember the contract correctly, each middle school has a certain number of stipend positions available and, and going through there and they can change from year to year. So we could come back next year and none of these are on here, based on what's available and who's, what students are want, are interested.
Or might be something different.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
Answer your question. Yep, no, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Never mind, I'm going to go say what you were saying.
No, I don't have any, anybody else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Doyle?
I'll make a motion to recess.
Okay, you're going to take a quick recess? Well, it might not be quick, but... We're going to recess. Is there, Cindy, any, anyone opposed to recessing for a little bit at nine-twenty-one?
Do you need a second space over there?
I'm assuming that's where they're going right now.